...dollars I have saved six months ago. Well, she's got like long, long time. Two minutes. Looks like during about two minutes. Call Marnie. See if she's trying to get on. Do you have her number? Huh? I probably got her. I know I do.
I hear him calling. Hey, Marnie, this is Munga. Um, council meeting tonight? Okay. Alright, I'll be done. She's getting on right now.
Just in the nick of time.
If you want, you can hear that when I'm, when I hang it, turn it on. It's like, okay, turn it up.
You're getting your second shot, bro. Gotta find a place to be.
I think we're sick after that. Heard that today.
I had two, I was, I was.
I wish I could do that, I have not been here. I'm in, I'm in the wrong state.
I went to a lesson, a student, I got sad to be there. Now it's snowing, raining, he goes, uh, secretary.
Okay, seven o'clock, we have, looks like we've got everybody hooked up. Let me say one thing, Marna, can you do? Marna, can you hear us? Okay. Oh, meeting, darling. Everybody, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and we have council member Gance to do our dedication tonight.
Yes. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us. We thank you for each person and each family represented. God help us to make the decisions that you would have us to make. Give us wisdom and guidance and be with us as we leave this meeting tonight. In Christ's name, amen.
Time's work, do you please have a roll call?
Richard.
Here.
Trey.
Here.
Nora.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Lowery. Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt.
Here.
Vaughn.
Yes, ma'am.
Benale.
Here.
Thank you, all present. You have the meetings from our special call, our last call, uh, special remote video council meeting from January eleventh in your packet. If there's not any corrections, I'd entertain a motion to accept those minutes as published.
Motion.
Ma'am.
Second.
Motion by Councilman, uh, Richard. And a second by.
Terry.
Benale. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like side. Minutes are passed. Under old business, the first order of business under the old business is ordinance, second reading, number twenty twenty-one dash, an ordinance enacted in adopted supplement to the twenty twenty S forty-eight to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash blank. An ordinance enacted and adopted supplement twenty twenty S dash forty-eight to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky. Whereas American League of Publishing Corporation Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the twenty twenty S forty-eight supplement to the Code of Ordinances, exhibit A of the City of Glasgow, which supplement contains all ordinances of general nature enacted to the supplement to the Code of Ordinances of this municipality. And whereas American League of Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections of the Code of Ordinances which are based on or make references to sections of the Kentucky vice statutes. And read that in the intent of council to accept these updated sections in accordance with changes in law and commonwealth of Kentucky, now therefore being ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky. Section number one, that the twenty twenty S forty-eight supplement to those ordinances of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, is submitted by American League of Publishing Corporation Cincinnati and is attached here to as exhibit A will be in the same as hereby adopted by references have set out in its entirety. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from an af- from an after state of passage approval and publication required by law. Harold Strong Mayor attests among seven city clerk. First reading, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Second reading, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Having heard this second reading of this ordinance, we have a roll call vote, please, vote on it. Okay. Can I get a motion and a second, or the second reading, please?
Motion, Lowery.
Motion by Councilman Lowery. And a second by Councilman, thank you. Now that I've wrote on it.
Benale.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Nora.
Yes.
Trey.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowery.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Second reading passes. Next ordinance is also a second reading. Ordinance, meaning the vice of ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-nine sixty, Barron County, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan to include the recently adopted twenty twenty Glasgow strategic plan.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash blank. An ordinance, meaning Glasgow ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-nine sixty, meaning Barron County, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan to include the recently adopted twenty twenty Glasgow strategic plan. That whereas Kentucky state law, specifically KRS one hundred dash point one ninety-seven, requires local planning commissions to review the comprehensive plan elements and their research basis from time to time in light of social, economic, technical, and physical weaknesses or changes. And leaving whatsoever five years, local planning commissions are being re-adopted comprehensive plan elements, which has been done in this in the Barron County, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan. Whereas the Glasgow strategic plan committee duly organized by the Glasgow City Council has made research facts and received input from the public to formulate and adopt a twenty twenty Glasgow strategic plan, which contains information on six peak areas that will have guide development in the City of Glasgow, all of which are appropriate for inclusion in the Barron County, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan. And whereas on November sixteen, twenty twenty, the joint city county planning commission passed a motion to adopt the twenty twenty Glasgow strategic plan as an element of the Barron County, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan and request it same be adopted. Now therefore, it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Number one, the twenty twenty Glasgow strategic plan shall be and hereby is adopted, approved and adopted in all respects. And the Barron County, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan is hereby needed to include the twenty twenty Glasgow strategic plan as one of its elements where it shall provide assistance and guidance for the implementation of decisions made by the commission and local government bodies as related to future fiscal development of the community. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from an after state of passage approval and publication required by law. Any provisions not specifically altered herein remains they appear in the Barron County, two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan. Harold Armstrong Mayor, attests among seven city clerk. First reading, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Second reading, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Having heard the reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion by Benale.
Motion by Benale, do I get a second, please?
Yeah, good.
Second by Councilman Norris. This being a second reading, I would ask that we have a roll call vote.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowery.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Nora.
Yes.
Trey.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Benale.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Second reading is approved. Next item of business is municipal orders, appointments that you had in your packet, January eleventh. First one is municipal order, twenty twenty-one, um, hereby, uh, reappointing Holly Alexander to the Plaza Advisory Board.
City of Glasgow municipal order number twenty twenty-one dash blank on order of the mayor. Holly Alexander is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment shall be a one-year term expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. It is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-fifth day of January, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, among seven city clerk.
Having heard the municipal order, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you by Councilman Neil. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like side. Municipal order passes. The next municipal order is that of reappointment of Jeff Harburg to the, uh, Plaza Theater Advisory Board.
City of Glasgow municipal order number twenty twenty-one dash blank on order of the mayor. Jeff Harburg is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment shall be a one-year term expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-fifth day of January, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, attests among seven city clerk.
Having heard the municipal order, do I have a motion to accept this individual?
Motion by Benale.
Motion by Councilman Benale and a second by.
Richard.
By Richard. All those approved, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those not approving, a, a like sign. Hereby is approved. Next item is municipal order, uh, Cody Meek is hereby reappointed to the Plaza Theater Advisory.
City of Glasgow municipal order number twenty twenty-one dash blank on order of the mayor, Cody Meek is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment shall be a one-year term expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-fifth day of January, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, among seven city clerk.
Having heard this municipal order, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Uh, Councilman Norris and a second by.
Neil.
All those approved, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Do not like side. Cody Meek is hereby. Uh, next item is municipal order, uh, reappointing period of Plaza Theater Advisory Board.
City of Glasgow municipal order number twenty twenty-one dash blank on order of the mayor. Jerry Carlson is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Plaza Theater Advisory Board. This appointment shall be a two-year term expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-fifth day of January, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, among seven city clerk.
Having heard this municipal order, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Honeycutt.
Motion by Councilman Honeycutt and a second by.
Second by Benale.
Second by Benale. All those approved, signify the s- s- same eye.
Aye.
Those that do not approve, like side. Jerry Carlson is hereby reappointed. Next item is municipal order, twenty twenty-one. Councilmember Marnie Patrick is hereby reappointed to the Renaissance Steering Committee.
City of Glasgow municipal order number twenty twenty-one dash blank on order of the mayor. Councilmember Marnie Kirkpatrick is hereby reappointed to the Renaissance Steering Committee. This appointment shall run concurrent with our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two term of office and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twenty-fifth day of January, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, among seven city clerk.
Having heard this municipal order, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Councilman Richard and a second by Councilman Benale. All those approved, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Do not like side. Hereby reappointed. Another new business, and we have, we have a list of all ones and we have some amendments that are gonna go in so we don't have to re- re- reread this and put it off another two weeks. There was some, uh, common errors and the, the, uh, city attorney can explain what those are because these were taken from a template from KLC and there's some things that just didn't apply and some things that were completely wrong. So he's gonna read to you the ordinance and then the, uh, amendments and take it and then we'll go from that on.
I'm gonna tell you just a little bit about it beforehand so you'll understand where we're going and how we're getting there. Um, our, um, code enforcement board and code court, excuse me, the code enforcement officer, uh, had a lot of responsibilities under KRS number three, chapter three eighty-one, especially point seven seven oh. We have been repealed and replaced with, uh, KRS sixty-five point eight eight oh one to sixty-five point eight eight three nine. Now, that sort of, in, in essence, did away with our code enforcement, uh, activities temporarily until we had to readopt a new program, which is what we're doing tonight. The Kentucky League of Cities put out two plans. One was Plan A and one was Plan B. And we got to pick the one that we liked the best and the criteria for us to make this decision to take Plan A. They relied mostly on our code enforcement officer whereas Plan B relied mostly on the code enforcement board. And we have never put the kind of responsibilities on that board uh, that the officer has and did not feel like that would be what would work best for us here. Because, uh, we worked pretty hard as it is. If we worked harder, we might not be that interested in serving. So we adopted Plan A and, uh, we had to make some changes to make it fit our program. And one of the, one of the things that, that we, uh, could change, but we had not changed, but we're gonna change it tonight was one of these amendments, if you decide to pass the amendment. And that is, um, that we're gonna wait forty-five days after notification before we record it and that gives the, uh, lien holders a chance to pay it without having to pay the recording fee and then the release fee, which now is fifty dollars each. So the recording and the release fee on a seventy-five dollar lien might add another hundred dollars to the cost and that would go something the lender might have to pay and then the lender would have to collect that back from the debtor. And it doesn't really require us to wait a few days about recording it. So the, the one amendment that we're doing, uh, on that issue is an amendment by itself because that's the most significant issue. The other amendment deals with things like, um, um, original plan from KLC had a proposal in it that would allow, um, alternate board members. We never intended to adopt that, but when I was redrafting and correcting it, we left some provisions in there about that and we're now taking those out. Um, also, um, a couple of things like, um, uh, there had been provisions in the, the new proposal that would allow the board to replace its own members under some circumstances. And we moved that so that they would have to be nominated by the mayor and approved by the council to be on that board. Uh, while those are, while I'm considering those matter grouping about seven of those together, if there's anything that, that you think we've done wrong, you can tell us. Uh, one of the amendments, uh, simply referred to the person who was responsible for something as he and we thought it should be changed to say the code enforcement officer instead of just saying he in that, uh, ordinance and also say the code enforcement officer. So, uh, that's kind of the extent of what these separate seven items are that we're going to do. Now, I'm gonna read the ordinance first and it's long and bear with me. It's, it's hard to listen to this long, but it's even harder to read this long about about twelve pages, but it's something that we do have to do and I can't, couldn't figure out any way around it, so here we are. And I'll go through it as fast as I can and if I get to where I'm, uh, yammering and you can't understand me, just holler real loud and stop me and I'll resume it and go along. City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty day, twenty twenty-one dash blank in ordinance of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, establishing a code enforcement board. Read it, it is the intent of KRS sixty-five point eight eight oh one to sixty-five point eight eight three nine to protect, promote, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens who reside within the city, authorizing the creation of administrative boards with authority to issue remedial orders and impose fines in order to provide equitable, expeditions effective, and inexpensive method of ensuring compliance with ordinances enforced within the city. And read it, the desire of the city council of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, to utilize the authority granted in KRS sixty-five point eight eight oh one to sixty-five point eight eight three nine. By creating the City of Glasgow Code Enforcement Board, now for, for being ordained by the City of Glasgow, the City Council of the City of Glasgow at clause, section one, the definitions. The following words, terms, and phrases used in this ordinance shall have the meanings described to them in this section except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. A, abatement cost, means the city's necessary and reasonable cost for and associated with clearing, preventing unauthorized individuals to and demolishing all or portion of the structure or premises or taking any other action with regard to the structure. Their terribility of violation and to maintain and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare in accordance with city ordinance. B, code enforcement board, means an administrative body created and acting under the authority of the local government Code Enforcement Board Act, KRS sixty-five point eight eight oh one to sixty-five point eight eight three nine. C, code enforcement officer, means a city police officer, safety officer, citation officer, or other public law enforcement officer with the authority to issue a citation. D, found order, means any order, number one, issued by the Code Enforcement Board following a hearing in accordance with section nineteen of this ordinance. Two, created because a violator neither paid nor contested a citation within seven days as provided in section F of this ordinance. Or three, created a violator, created because the violator failed to appear to hearing. The violator requested to contest a citation as provided in section nineteen of this ordinance. E, imminent danger, means a condition which is likely to obscure life, hurting, injured, or dead at any time. F, ordinance, is an official action by the local government body which is a regulation of a general and permanent nature and enforceable as a local law and shall include any provision of a local, of a code ordinances adopted by the city legislative body which embodies all or parties and ordinance. T, owner, means a person, association, corporation, partnership, or other legal entity having a legal or equitable title and real property. H, premises, means they have lot, plot, or partially land, including any structures on it. Section two, creation and membership. There is hereby created within the city of Glasgow pursuant to KRS sixty-five point eight eight oh one to sixty-five point eight eight three nine. A code enforcement board which shall be composed of five members, all of whom shall be residents of the city for a period of at least one year prior to their appointment and shall reside there throughout the term of office. Section three, enforcement powers. A, the code enforcement board shall have the power to issue remedial orders and impose civil fines as a method of enforcing city ordinances when a violation of the ordinance has been classified as a civil offense. B, the board shall have the authority to enforce any ordinance regulated conduct which would also, under any permission of the Kentucky vice statutes, constitute a criminal offense or a living motor vehicle offense. And four, appointment of members, term of office, removal from office, posted compensation. Members of the code enforcement board shall be appointed by the executive authority of the city, approved of the legislative body. The initial appointment to the enforcement board shall be as close. Now, I'm gonna skip all of this B section because I'm sure that part's gonna be deleted on amendment. C, cause that's, that's, uh, within the original model plan, it's not what we need. C, all such an appointment shall be returned for three years and may be reappointed subject to approval of the legislative body. D, the executive authority may appoint subject to the approval of the legislative body to alternate members. That section's gonna be deleted too. E, any vacancy on the board shall be filled by the executive authority subject to the executive authority or legislative body within sixty days of the vacancy. If the vacancy is not filled within that time period, the management and code enforcement board members shall fill the vacancy. That provision will be deleted. A vacancy shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term. F, a board member may be removed from office by the executive authority for misconduct, inefficiency, and willful neglect of duty. The executive authority shall submit a written statement to the member in the legislative body stating forth three reasons. The members so removed shall have the right to appeal to the circuit court. All members of the code enforcement board shall before entering upon the duties of their office, take the oath of office prescribed by section two twenty-eight of the Kentucky Constitution. H, no member of the code enforcement board shall hold any elected or non-elected office higher than or any position of employment within the city. Section fact, organization of voting. The code enforcement board shall have the, annually elect a chair. The chair should be the presiding officer and a full voting member of the board. In the absence of the chair, the remaining members of the board shall select a member to preside and place up and exercise the powers of the chair. Regular meetings of the code enforcement board shall be held on the second Thursday every two months, beginning in January. Meetings other than those regularly scheduled shall be special meetings or emergency meetings, held in accordance with the requirements of the Kentucky Open Meetings Act. C, all meetings and hearings of the code enforcement board shall be public meetings held in accordance with the requirements of KRS sixty-five point eight eight one five, subsection five in the Kentucky Open Meetings Act. D, the presence of a majority of the board's attorneyship shall constitute form. The affirmative vote of a majority of the form of the board shall be for any official action undertaken. E, minutes shall be kept of all proceedings of the code enforcement board and the vote of any member on any issue decided by the board shall be recorded in minutes. Section six, conflict of interest. Any member of the code enforcement board who has any direct or indirect financial or personal interest in any matter to be decided shall dispense of the nature of the interest, shall disqualify himself from voting on matters which he has an interest and shall not be counted for purposes of establishment of form. Section seven, powers of the code enforcement board. The City of Glasgow Code Enforcement Board shall have the following powers and duties. A, to adopt rules and regulations to govern its operations and conduct its hearings, according to. To conduct hearings to determine if there's been a violation of an order over which it has been. C, to subpoena alleged violators' witnesses and evidence to its hearings. Subpoenas issued by the code enforcement board may be served by any code enforcement officer. D, to take testimony under oath. The chairman shall have authority to administer oaths for the purpose of taking testimony. E, to make findings of facts and issue orders necessary to remedy any violation of city ordinance or code provision which the board is authorized to enforce. L, to impose civil fines authorized from any person found to have violated an ordinance over which the board has jurisdiction. Section eight, enforcement proceedings. The following requirements shall govern the proceedings before the code enforcement board. Enforcement proceedings shall only be initiated by the issuance of a citation by code enforcement officer. B, except that immediate actions necessary pursuant to section sixteen of this ordinance if the code enforcement officer believes based on his personal observation or investigation he has violated the city ordinance. Each of the notice of violation will allow the alleged violator to execute remedy the violation without incurring penalties. If the alleged violator fails or refuses to remedy the violation within the time specified, the code enforcement officers authorized to issue a citation. The code enforcement officers shall issue a citation by one of the following methods. One, personal service to the alleged violator. Two, leaving a copy of the citation with each person eighteen years of age or older who is on the premises. If the alleged violator is not on the premises at the time of the citation issued. Or three, posting a copy of the citation in a conspicuous place on the premises and mailing a copy of the citation by regular first-class mail to the owner of record of the property if no one is on the premises at the time the citation is issued. The citation issued by the code enforcement officer shall contain the following information. Number one, the date and time of issuance. Number two, the name and address of the person to whom the citation is issued. Number three, the physical address of the premises where the violation occurred. Number four, the date and time the event was committed. Number five, the facts constituting the offense. Number six, the section of the code or the number of ordinance violated. Number seven, the name of the code enforcement officer. Number eight, the civil fine that may be imposed for the violation, including cover of quicker. The civil fine that will be imposed if the person does not contest the violation, the citation, and the maximum civil fine that may be imposed if the person elects to contest the citation. The procedure for the, number nine, the procedure for the person to follow in order to pay the civil fine or to contest the citation and, number ten, a statement that if the person fails to pay the civil fine set forth in the citation or contests the citation within the time allowed, the person shall be deemed to have waived the right to a hearing before the code enforcement board to contest the citation. The determination that the violation was committed shall be final. The citation as issued shall be deemed a final order determining that the violation was committed and imposing the civil fine set forth in the citation. And the person shall be deemed to have waived the right to appeal the final order to district court. Subsection E. After issuing the citation to an alleged violator, the code enforcement officer shall notify the code enforcement board by delivering the citation to the chairman of the code enforcement board or such person as selected by the code enforcement board. F, number one, the person to whom the citation is issued shall respond to the citation within seven days of the issuance by either paying the civil fine or requesting in writing a hearing to contest the citation. If the person fails to respond to the citation within seven days, the person shall be deemed to have waived the right to a hearing and the determination that the violation was committed shall be considered final. In this event, the citation as issued shall be deemed a final order determining that the violation was committed and imposing the civil fine set forth in the citation. And the person shall be deemed to have waived the right to appeal the final order of district court or to district court. Number two, notice of a final order shall be provided to the cited violator by regular first-class mail, certified mail, return receipt requested, person delivery, or by leaving the notice at the person's usual place of residence with any individual residing there who is eighteen years of age or older and who is informed of the contents of the notice. Section nine, hearing notice and final order. When a hearing has been requested, the code enforcement board or its administrative staff shall schedule a hearing. B, not less than seven days before the date of the hearing, the code enforcement board shall notify the requester of the date, time, and place of the hearing. The notice shall be given by regular first-class mail, certified mail, return receipt requested, person delivery, or by leaving the notice at the person's usual place of residence with any individual residing there who is eighteen years of age or older and who is informed of the contents of the notice. C, the person requesting a hearing who fails to appear at the time and place set for the hearing shall be deemed to have waived the right to a hearing to contest the citation and the determination that a violation was committed shall be final. In event the citation is issued, shall be deemed a final order determining the violation was committed and imposing the civil fines set forth in the citation. And the alleged violators shall be deemed to have waived the right to appeal the final order to district. Number two, notice of a final order shall be provided to the alleged violator or regular first-class mail, certified mail, return receipt requested, person delivery, or by leaving the notice at the person's usual place of residence with any individual residing there who is eighteen years of age or older and who is informed of the contents of the notice. D, all testimony to hearings shall be taken under oath and recorded affected from the code enforcement officer, the alleged violator, and any witnesses to the violation offered by the code enforcement officer, alleged violator. Form and rules of evidence shall not apply, but fundamental due process shall be observed and shall govern the proceedings. E, the code enforcement officer shall, based on the evidence, determine whether a violation was committed. If it is determined that no violation was committed, an order dismissing the citation shall be entered. If it is determined that a violation has occurred, an order may be issued of holding citation. The board may post a final up to the maximum authorized by ordinance and require the offender to remedy a continuing violation to avoid a final or both. L, every final order followed in hearing shall be issued to writing which shows a clue the findings and conclusions reached and the date the order was issued. A copy shall be furnished to the person named in the citation. Number two, if the person named in the citation is not present when the final order is issued, the order shall be delivered to the person by regular first-class mail, certified mail, return receipt requested, personal delivery, or by leaving the notice at the person's usual place of residence with any individual residing there who is eighteen years of age or older and who is informed of the contents of the notice. Section ten, presentation of cases. Each case before the code enforcement board shall be presented by an attorney selected by the city, a code enforcement officer for the city, or a member of the city's administrative staff. The city attorney may be either counsel to the code enforcement board or may present cases before the code enforcement board, but shall in no case serve in both capacities. Section eleven, appeals, final judgment. A, an appeal from a final order of the code enforcement board following a hearing conducted pursuant to section nineteen of this ordinance shall be made to the district court within thirty days of the date the order is issued. The appeal may be initiated by the filing of the complaint and a copy of the final order in the same manner as any civil action of the Kentucky rules of civil procedure. B, if no appeal from a final order of the authority code enforcement board is filed within period set in the subject and name of this section, the code enforcement board's order shall be deemed final for all purposes. Section twelve, ordinance found scheduled. Violations of ordinances that are enforced by the city code enforcement board shall be subject to the following schedule of civil fines. If a, if a citation for a violation of an ordinance is not contested by the person charged with the violation, the penalty set forth in this section shall apply. And there the type of violations you got are animals unsafe and unfit, structured codes, arguments, notification, license, and weeds. On all of those, first offense for fifty dollars, second offense one hundred, and third offense two hundred. B, if the citation is contested and a hearing before the code enforcement board is required, the following maximum penalties may be imposed at the direct discretion of the code enforcement board. And this allows the code enforcement board to issue penalties that were double what the initial citation might provide for if the board suffers as appropriate. The maximum civil fine that may be imposed if the person elects to contest a citation is double the civil fine. If the code enforcement board enforces a per day fine, the maximum civil fine is six thousand dollars, one hundred dollars per day for a maximum of sixty days. Section thirteen, lien, fines, charges, and fees. The city shall possess a lien on property owned by the person found by not applicable final order as defined in section one D of this ordinance or by final judgment of court to have committed a violation of the city ordinance. The lien shall be for all civil fines assessed by the violation and for all charges and fees incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the ordinance, including abatement costs. And affidavit, the code enforcement officer shall constitute probable base of evidence of the amount of the lien and regularity of the proceedings pursuant to KRS sixty-five point eight eight oh one and sixty-two, sixty-five point eight eight three nine. B, the lien shall be recorded in the office of the county clerk. The lien shall be noticed in all persons from the time of due reporting and shall bear interest until paid. The lien shall continue for ten years following the date of the non-appeal or final order or final court judgment. C, subject to section fifteen of this ordinance, the lien shall take precedence over all other liens except state, county, school board, and city taxes and may be enforced by judicial proceedings, including the foreclosure action. D, in addition to the remedy prescribed in subsection A of this section, the person found to have committed the violation shall be personally responsible for the amount of all civil fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, fees, and abatement costs incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the ordinance. The city may bring civil action against the person and shall have the same remedies as provided for the recovery of debt. Section fourteen, lien holder notification system. The city shall obtain and maintain propriety over previously filed liens as provided in section thirteen of this ordinance and ordinance with the following provisions. Individuals and entities, including but not limited to lien holders, may register with the city to receive electronic notification of final orders entered pursuant to this ordinance. B, in order to receive notification, the registrant shall submit the following information to the code enforcement staff. Name, mailing address, phone number, and electronic mailing address. C, a registrant may use the electronic form provided on the city website to submit the information required by subsection B of this section. It shall be the responsibility of the registrant to maintain and update the required contact information with the city. The city shall inform a registrant of any evidence received that the electronic mailing address is invalid or not functional, so that the registrant may provide an updated electronic mailing address. Once per month, the city shall send the electronic mail notification of all final orders entered pursuant to this ordinance since the last date of notification to each party registered pursuant to this section. This notification shall provide an electronic link to the city code enforcement database located on the city website. The database shall include the following information regarding each final order. Number one, the name of the person charged with the violation. Number two, the physical address of the premises where the violation occurred. Number three, the last known mailing address for the owner of the premises where the violation occurred. Number four, a copy of the full citation. Number five, a copy of the full final order. And six, the status of the final order regarding its ability to be appealed pursuant to this ordinance. D, if an appeal is filed on a final order pursuant to this ordinance, the city shall send the electronic mail notification to all registrants. L, within ten days of the issuance of a final order pursuant to this ordinance, the city shall update its code enforcement database to reflect the issued final order and shall post a notification required by subsection D of this section containing an updated link to the code enforcement database on the city website. The city shall maintain the records created under this section for ten years following their issuance. Section fifteen, liens. A lien holder of record who is registered pursuant to fourteen B of this ordinance may within forty-five days from date of issuance of notification under section fourteen D of this ordinance. One, correct the violation if it's not already been evaded or pay all civil fines assessed for the violation and all charges and fees incurred by the city in connection with enforcement of the ordinance, including abatement costs. B, nothing in this section shall prohibit the city from taking immediate action if necessary under section sixteen of this ordinance. C, the lien provided for by section thirteen of this ordinance shall not take precedence over previously reported liens, ill one, the city failed to comply with the requirements of section fourteen of this ordinance for notification of the final order or two, a prior lien holder complied with subsection A of this section. D, a lien that does not take precedence over previously reported liens under subsection C of this section shall if the final order remains partially unsatisfied, continue to take precedence over all other subsequent liens except liens for state, county, school board, and city taxes. E, the city may record a lien before the forty-five day period established in subsection A of this section expires. If the lien is fully satisfied prior to the expiration of the forty-five day period, the city shall release the lien in the county clerk's office where the lien is recorded within fifteen days of satisfaction. And that's the one that the, that main amendment changes. Failure of the city to comply with sections fourteen and fifteen of this ordinance or failure of a lien to take precedence over previously filed liens as provided in subsection C of this section shall not limit or restrict any other remedies the city has against the property of the violator. Subsection, or section sixteen, immediate action. Nothing in this ordinance shall prohibit the city from taking immediate actions to remedy a violation of its ordinance where there is reason to believe that the violation prevents a serious threat to the public health, safety, and welfare or if in the absence of immediate action, the effects of the violation will be irreparable or irreversible. Now, section seventeen, potential conflict with other ordinances. This ordinance shall have priority over all other ordinances which with which a conflict is created and a provision of other ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed. All ordinances and provisions and ordinance not in conflict remain in full force and effect. Much of KRS chapter three eighty-one, including section three eighty-one point seven seven oh, upon which parts of Glasgow's ordinance, chapter ninety-five, news that is faced has been repealed and replaced with parts of KRS chapter sixty-five. Aaron Armstrong, mayor, at this, called seventh city clerk, first meeting, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. And what we need to do here is, um, make the most to approve, uh, this ordinance. And then I'll go over the two amendments and you can vote on those and then, uh, you'll consider the ordinance as amended. And that way we can avoid a whole lot of reading and a whole lot of change in the future because we'll fix all these things now. And it will be done and any questions on those amendments, I can address them because I've been over real carefully.
Having heard this, if you're still awake, we've got, uh, I'd like a motion to accept the, uh, ordinance.
As Councilman Benelson moved.
Councilman Benel has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second of the councilman, uh, which all those in favor signify I'm saying I'm.
Hold on, can we have question?
Uh, we're not ready to vote yet.
We gotta do the amendments too.
Gotta do the amendments.
Do it.
You can discuss it, but, uh, can you get, discuss it? What these amendments are and that thing, uh, Terry Benel is gonna move the amendments because these are things that he discussed with me yesterday.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
All right. I've got a couple of questions and, and I wanted to start with you. In the very beginning, you said that, uh, we had an option of A or B, Plan A or Plan B.
Right.
All right. Which plan are we using now? Because aren't we using just chapter ninety-five on the city ordinance?
No, you're talking about today before we.
Yes.
About what we used in the past?
Yes.
It was a program that was developed on that page, it's three eighty-one, which has been repealed.
All right. Did, uh, you said we had option A or B? Couldn't we not have just stayed the way we are without adopting a new ordinance?
No, because the statute that it was based upon was repealed and we had to do a new one in light of, um, the, the new statute and we have the opportunity under this program for our liens. for our liens to have priority over, uh, previously recorded mortgages, which gives us a whole lot of things to collect, uh, liens that we, that we would file, reasons like for mowing or for cleaning up lots or for tearing down property, uh, that way it's can come from the value of the property and not from the tax payers and cities' coffers to pay for cleaning up messes.
All right. Uh, one of the other questions I have is, is, uh, do we have any other board that has this kind of power?
I guess they all do.
They all do, depending on what, what they're charging. You can't compare this board to another board, they, they have different powers, correct?
All right, 'cause I guess where I'm going with this is, is, you know, we're sitting there and we're looking at the fines and everything else, and I'm looking over here at somebody not mowing their yard, third offense, next thing you know, it's been a hundred days or sixty days at a hundred dollars a day that this board can assign to it, so six thousand dollars for not mowing their yard?
Over a long period of time, that may be possible, but that's not generally the way it's been enforced. They have the same power in the past that this gives them as far as next concern. And the board and the code enforcement officer has had the ability, um, you know, for, um, what, twenty years?
Twenty four, twenty six.
For about, for about twenty years, the city, the code enforcement people have been able to do that, uh, if that was the appropriate thing to do. Uh, we have a program now where, uh, we have cleaned up a lot of messes, and if you would like to thank the tour sometime, I'll take you around and show you, uh, we've made some progress the last two years, uh, beyond, you know, what, uh, I think's been done in the past. Any other questions?
I'm still not satisfied with our definition of weeds and the grasshike, but weeds are, weeds in the eyes of a holder to me. I think we need stronger definitions that we're gonna find people for.
You want to, uh, propose us a definition, we'll try to include that tonight if you do.
You got one in there about the height.
We have one in about the heights, which I didn't agree with when we adopted it, I think it's, uh, too much, but we never did decide what a weed was. If you remember, uh, some people's ornamental, uh, flowers and vines or weeds to their next door neighbor, and I, I'm not satisfied with that. I think if we're gonna say weeds, we need to have a list of what a weed is.
Do you, would you like to address the context of the particular ordinance that has that definition in it? Or would you like to hold this up and try to put something in this one along that line? Uh, you certainly could do even one.
I'd like to, to just come up back and amend this ordinance at some point in time with a definition of what weeds are. Yeah, I just, I'm not happy with it at all. I, I told the people before, uh, I had a ornamental vine that I planted for my mother that my next door neighbor cut down. Uh, it was on my property, but they cut it down, so I don't, I don't agree with that. Uh, you know, it, it's, it needs to be defined what a weed is, just list, these are noxious weeds. Uh, if you wanna say dandelions and thistles and just stop it there, that's okay, but we need to say what a weed is, a, and, and not just say weeds.
Do, do you want to, uh, how this ordinance does not address that, that's in chapter ninety five, very little important. Do you want to put something in this ordinance to that thing, or do you want to amend our other ordinance that's got the heat in it?
I just, I, somewhere in the city ordinances, we need to define what a weed is. I don't care where it is or when we do it, we can adopt this ordinance now, uh, but I don't, I don't like, like what we have.
Why don't we go through with this and then go back to ninety five where it is stated, and if you want more intense, uh, definition, either the board up there can do that, or if y'all wanna submit something, and we'll go back and make an amendment to that, that ordinance and describe more in detail what a weed might be, whatever it is y'all.
I can take your proposal, write you up a, an ordinance or an amendment to support whatever proposal you give me. If you give me something, I'll write it up and write it for the council and above all
Okay.
Mayor, I, I'm gonna move, uh, to amend the motion on ordinance. Uh, several items I discussed with the city attorney today, and I think the city attorney has those, uh, amendments, uh, before him there, if he'd like to state those, or if he wants me to state those.
Let, let me read this one and see if this is consistent with what you asked me for, because if it is, this amendment passes and is adopted, I can, I can have it here in writing, and I can give it to them, and it'll be easier for you to work it in if I have correctly listed as the way you want it going. Uh, this is the, what I, uh, offered in light of our discussions, and if you, people want to look at code section fifteen E, this is the section that this amendment class only to code section fifteen E, and the, uh, amendment is this, I move to amend the proposed code ordinance section fifteen E. In place of the proposed fifteen E, the ordinance shall state, the city will not record its lien until the passage of forty five days from the issuance of section fourteen D of the ordinance. When a recorded lien is fully satisfied, the city shall release the lien within fifteen days of satisfaction. Now, let me tell you why, I understand that this was a, I can tell you that I, I fully support, uh, that, uh, that concern, and, and it's gotten not anymore to do with banking than it does the citizens of Glasgow. When you record a lien, it costs about fifty dollars. When you record a release, it's another fifty dollars. There's times when, uh, we may record a lien that's, that's for mowing or for something else that's gonna be less than a hundred dollars, but you've got to look your time at recording and releasing. In this, in this plan, and, and that, that we're adopting, uh, we have the ability to notify, uh, lenders that we're about to file this lien, and they have a right to come in and pay off for their debtor, uh, so that it doesn't have to be filed against the property. That gets the city's lien paid, and by giving them the time to go through this process, it avoids the payment of a hundred dollars in fees, uh, that, uh, doesn't serve the purposes of the, the lender, the debtor or the city. And, uh, uh, to that extent, um, whatever influence I might have, I think it's a good idea. But if you have questions about that, tell me, because to me, this is the most significant, uh, change that we're proposing, and that's why I set it out as a separate amendment, because this was, uh, this is just one issue that we're looking at for this. So, you have a question, huh?
Also, clarification, this would pertain to an individual. If they inherited a piece of property and they're selling the estate, and they didn't know that this was against it, you would be notifying them and they would have the same length of time to pay it before it got, uh, lien recorded, correct?
That would be true if they had registered as a baby screen, which, which would authorize them to get the notification. They had to file, uh, their email addresses, and then they get the automatic notifications, uh, when these are about to be filed, uh, they're told that they're, and if they do something in forty five days, there's no lien filed.
Hey, Danny? Danny? Hello?
I'm here.
Are you saying that all three parties are getting grace? Is grace being extended to all three of the groups?
All three can benefit from the grace that's being extended. Um, the, the, uh, the savings, the, the savings would be enjoyed by all, in my opinion.
Okay.
Uh, do we need to vote on that amendment separate, or you?
I, I would say, uh, if somebody wants to move this, he's already moved this, there's a second vote on this amendment.
Do I have a second on this amendment?
Second.
I have a second for Freddie Norris. We can vote on the amendment now, correct?
Right.
All those in favor of this amendment signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, likely? Amendment passes now, you've got another one that's got several corrections that he read earlier, but he goes back.
Going to let you look that through, that document that you read already at the beginning.
Yeah, Danny, if we could, before we begin that, let me, uh, formalize that a little bit, and I move to amend the motion by, and what you're gonna follow to say.
I didn't understand what you said, bro.
This would be the second amendment, and I move to amend the motion by the following comments you're gonna make.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, uh, read this as I go through, and I'll read each one of these items, and I think these are more masterful, but, uh, but if you have questions about them, as I mentioned, you stop me and we'll discuss them, uh, until you're satisfied that you're familiar with them, and any part of this can be dropped out of the amendment if, if it's something that you don't like. I move to amend the proposed code enforcement ordinance as follows, and the first one is four B on page three, and it's at the top of the page, and in four B, you have a one, two and three, and it's, it's one third of the membership shall be appointed for a term of one year, and one third should be appointed for two years, and one third for years. We don't have six members on the board, we've got five, so first of all, those thirds don't work that well. And then, second, we already have a board, and what we're doing is substituting these words. Present board members shall continue as board members according to the term of their initial appointment. And we're dropping out that B, one, two and three, and adding that simple sentence in to say we're keeping the same board, and we're keeping them on the same terms as they were originally appointed. And that's all that change does. If you have any questions, now stop me, because I go on through these, so I keep, you don't stop me. Four C, we're adding a phrase after the word B reappointed. You see there in C where it says a member may be reappointed? In this proposal from KLC, the board itself could reappoint under certain circumstances, and we've taken that and invited it to give authority, and all we've done is just added that saying, the only way you're getting reappointed is if the mayor reappoints you, subject to approval of the legislative body, which is you guys. So that's just putting it back like it has always been, that the mayor appoints and you guys vote, and if you don't like somebody, you don't vote for them and appoint somebody else. That's all that change does. The next is four D, and that deals with alternate members. We don't have alternate members and didn't want alternate members, and so four D is deleted entirely. That's the section that provided for appointment of alternate members. Then four E is amended, um, in this way. It's talking about filling vacancies and so forth, and it keeps the first part of the first sentence, and says, any vacancy on the board shall be filled by the executive authorities pursuant to approval of legislative. And everything else in that is deleted, which was another, uh, provision that allowed the board to, uh, fill a vacancy. So this is putting it back like it's always been, where the mayor, uh, appoints and then you approve, and, and that's, that's all that does. Now, the next one is eight V, which is on page five. Eight V, there's a, uh, in the middle of the paragraph, it says, he shall give a notice of violation. That he changes to the enforcement officer. It may be a she or, you know, whoever it may be, but we're dropping the he and simply saying in place of he, the code enforcement officer, which is, uh, appears to be a matter of change, but could be significant, whoever's, whoever's reading it and whoever the code enforcement officer is. Okay, uh, the next one is, uh, in section twelve, which is the, um, okay, in section twelve, which is on page nine. At the top, you've got an A and then a B and another A, and that one is totally my fault, that, that second A is changed to C. And further in that little paragraph, it says enforcement and nuisance board. That was picked up off of a document, uh, that we were getting some good information off of, but it was a mistake, and I failed to notice it, because I missed this provision in. But, uh, what we're doing there is removing and nuisance, the name of the board, and it goes back to simply the code enforcement board. And the final one is in eight A on the next page, uh, where it says in fourteen A, individuals and entities included to lien holders, after lien holders, inserting in parentheses the term registrants, because later on in the document, we refer to registrants, and they are the lien holders, but nowhere does it ever define them. So we put registrants in parentheses after lien holders, so that you know when registrants are used later on, that's lien holders who are the lenders who may have a mortgage on the property. It could be a banker, it could be, uh, a private individual that's loaning for somebody to buy property, uh, you know, it, it could be, um, any kind of, uh, financial situation, uh, credit union maybe or something like that. Now, those are the changes that will be the other amendment. Any of those we can discuss, any of them we can drop out, but if you adopt this amendment, uh, these are typed up, ready to go for Mona, if that's agreeable to be the second amendment to the ordinance.
And you have one, one item that we, we failed to mention there, it's on page nine, it's under section thirteen, and the beginning of that, it's the subsection A, so third, section thirteen subsection A, it's on, found on page nine. Uh, the first part of that would have these words inserted, if a citation is unpaid.
I remember us discussing that, and I don't know how that's not wrong here, but I'm gonna put it on here now, making part of it, it's section A of section, subsection A and section thirteen. Repeat that again, Terry.
If a citation is unpaid, comma, and then the rest of it would be the same, the city shall possess.
Okay. That will be added as part of it, that would be part of this motion to amend. If, if the motion to amend passes, these changes will be put in this ordinance as part of the ordinance when it's called to its first reading, so when it does its second reading, it'll be pristine, have all these in it, and then it'll be finished, it won't have to have further action and further publication in the paper, whatever's showing these changes, because they'll already be there and they'll save several dollars.
The, uh, violation offenses, fines, they're not necessarily per day, they're only per day if the board says that, is that correct?
They're only per day under certain circumstances, and, um.
So all citations have been, have been ignored. The third citation gets ignored. The third citation gets ignored and it can be a per day.
I think we've only got one here in town that's had the per day problem. And they've probably disregarded every notice they've gotten. And it's a tough situation.
But the, the board is the one that decides if it's per day or just a one-time fine?
Starts out as a fine. And the second notice would be, they get a, they get a notice of a violation. And then if they ignore it, they get a citation. If they ignore that one, I forgot how many days it states in there. Then they get a citation, which is probably $200. And then if they ignore that, the officer can give them a third citation. And if that's ignored, not paid, nothing done about it, then they can, eight days after that third citation, can write a citation per day.
Okay, who, who determines if they're going to write a citation per day? The board or the code enforcement officer?
And that ordinance, the code enforcement officer after the third one, can so many days, I don't know how many it says in the ordinance. Fifteen days or 30 days after that third one, she can put a per day. But when it gets that, that extreme, she would come before the board because it's only been one that's happened that way. And she brought it before the board to see if there was any reason why it shouldn't be done.
Yeah, I think, I think the board should oversee any of these per day fines.
They will, but she has her power to bring it to the board and say it's, it's lapsed. And make sure that they tell her to go ahead.
Okay.
Hey, let me ask a question, and you may have read it. Baz, I got lost somewhere in there. But is this, if I own two pieces of property, do you have to find me on each property? Or is it a cumulative? If I'm a problem in the city, do they go cumulatively? Or do they go individually if it's the same owner?
I believe it's based on the property itself. If you had, if you had a lot on Main Street and a lot on South Green and you were both in violation, I believe it'd be two different facts.
Is, do you? I mean, for me personally, I think if you've got somebody that's got five fines and five pieces of property. I mean, I don't think we should have to go through this because they are a problem, not just, not just the property. That's just my opinion. I think if somebody's got multiple properties and multiple fines, we shouldn't give them 45 days on each one and three, three visits on each one. That's just my opinion because they are habitual problem. You know what I'm saying?
The 45 days, now that's not a grace period. It's about recording the lien that we put it in front of the bank's lien. So it's not, it, it's not, the 45 days doesn't have anything to do with the law.
I understand, but you know what I'm saying? How, whatever the days are, if the first property gets in the first visit and, and then the next one lapses, I mean, should there not be some accountability for a person that's got multiple properties that are multiple problems?
You only put the lien on each property and it tested.
Okay. So one last question now, I'll be, well, I got two que, a question I thought. Does the code enforcement, does she on her first visit make a personal visit face to face? Or is it sent as a letter or email? Or how does that first transaction to get the clock started go?
She'll make a personal contact. If it's a renter in the property, she will make a contact with the renter. And then she will call the owner and tell them what's going on. And so that she can get them. If it's a person living there, she doesn't make contact. She'll leave the notice. It's a door hanger that says, you are now in violation. Please call this office so we might work out a remedy. They'll call and if they don't call for so many days, then she'll visit again. She'll get a phone number and she'll make a contact. Unless it's over 30 days, she'll make a contact within the first 10 or 12 days to tell them they're going to get fined. If they don't get it cleaned up. Once she's made that contact, they have so many days to make whatever it is. If it's, if it's a refrigerator, the washing dryer sitting in the front yard. Or if it's grass, waste time, whatever the, the ordinance, the violation is, she will personally make contact with the owner before she issues the citation.
Okay. And then my, my question or thought, and it may be, how automated? I mean, if we've got one lady doing every property with as many properties as we have in, in Pearl. How automated is her stuff to keep up with? Because that seems like a, a huge bunch of work to try to keep up with all that.
We've taken some of the money in earmarked to have everything recomputerized. Plus she has ordered a little walking computer that she can literally print out the notices and the citations on. That will go from a portable issue back to her computer.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're, we're getting down to stone age, but it's slow and we're trying to make maximum little money that we've got to try to get as much good out of it. It's okay.
Yeah, I understand. I just feel sorry for her because there's a ton of properties that would fit into this. And to try to keep up with that and, you know, is this the first notice, second, third? Just seems like a lot of, a lot of manpower for sure. But thank you.
She's doing remarkable job. And if you want to take a little tour sometime and go around and look at some of the things that she's been able to accomplish. I'd be happy to take you and show you some of the ones that we're working on that we've not, if you look at it and you think there's not much progress, but I can tell you the things that we're doing.
Well, there's a street over by the post, by the old post office that somebody did a really good job on, so.
Plus, a year ago this January, there were over 45. It already got to the point, they should have been either a lien plate or they've been a lien placed and nothing done. And they just went on and on and on. But those 40, we've added about 32. It's down to about 26 now. So you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of 76. That's been done approximately a year and about almost two years now. So.
Hey, Dave, what would you say, what would you say the percentage of owners that are in violation that are local? And owners that are in violation that may be estate, family estates or living abroad somewhere? Do you have any idea what that percentage would break?
I can tell you, we got one house needed to us without having to foreclose. That was in Japan. And with three phone calls, having to stand up to 4:30 in the morning in order to talk to them. They actually sent us a deed to give us that house. So they didn't have to tear it down. We didn't have to have a lien. So we've been making great strides. And I mean, it's, it's an uphill battle, but she's doing a good job. The board's doing a good job. And you can't just, you can't just start all over. I'll put it to you this way. About three weeks ago, we got a piece of property sold. There have been liens on that property for the last 13 years. And we just now got it, it was sold at the courthouse door. And so, you know, that says a whole lot about what's going on. And you go in some of these communities and people who complain about a house and they see that it's been fixed up or it's been torn down. And then they get a citation for something that they, and then all of a sudden they, you know, instead of saying, I don't know why you're calling me because this house up here just now got tore down. It's been that way for five years. Now the thought, thought pattern is more like, well, we got that one fixed up. I guess I'm going to have to do something with this one. I mean, it's the perception of the citizens are starting to get on board and starting to help out.
Mayor?
Yes?
That was my question. I, I think several of us probably get questions from the community about what's being done with this property and that property. How much of this information that goes through code enforcement is, is subject to open records? Or can a citizen call in to find out what's being done to a particular property?
Yes, they can call if they have a property that's not theirs. But they can call the codes officer and she can readily tell them. And if they've complained several times, like some of them have, she can tell them, we're in the stages of getting, getting it's a commissioner sale. Or we've got a, we've got a, from the owner, they are in the process. They have bids, it's going to be torn down the next two and a half months. She can give anybody an update. Of course, it takes her time to do that out from some of the other stuff. But she's made time to inform the people who are calling.
I had, I had a, I heard a citizen talking about code enforcement the other day. And I said, come on, ride with me. And I took him around and I was showing him the, the things that we were doing. And he was impressed. And he said, well, what about that one over on Front Street? And I said, well, I don't know. I go over there and look and look, and it was bad and maybe it had a fire. And I said, well, I'd have to let you know. I didn't know. I called the code enforcement lady. She had tracked down the owner in Spain and the owner in Spain had agreed to have a contract to start on the following week. I went back to the citizen and told him and he said, huh? Well, and then about two weeks later, I took a picture of the barrel lot that had been bulldozed, graded and seeded. Took you a picture of that to show you what had happened to that lot. And I think he was impressed. There, there's a whole lot. I can't keep up with it. There's some of it I help with, but there's a whole lot of it that happens. And I don't even know what's happening. So she's, she made progress. And if you get a chance, run back to her office. I encouraged her when she first started to make pictures of the things that she did and the progress she was making. So if there was any critical thinking, she'd have crewed her place. Run back and look at her office and just like to tour the town of properties that have been improved or polished. But, but there's a world of things there. And I, I think if you go back and just look at what she's got on the wall, you'll be impressed. It'd be a good thing to do. And if you want to tour sometime, I'll take you.
I would also urge each and every one of you to attend a board, a codes board meeting. Because just when you think that you're going to bring up something, it'll probably be talked about. It's been a problem for a while. So they usually last about an hour and a half or so. But they're at nine o'clock on, is it the second, second Thursday?
Second Thursday, but the one this month didn't happen. I think it's going to happen.
We're going to have it on, actually going to have it this Thursday. Because they had to change it. We didn't have a horn for, for the second Thursday of this month. But any of you that can come, it's held up here. We all socially distance everybody on the board. But you can, you're welcome to sit in the back of the room and social distance from anybody else that might show up. But I think you would be highly satisfied when you find, find out the work's being done on that board. But.
Part of this ordinance, it did say that a lot of the information that you have had questions about will be available online. We do intend to add more things to the code enforcement webpage itself. Also will be included is the citation itself. And you can use the e-notify button that you go and sign up. So each time a adjustment is made to that page, you receive an email. Not only will you have to send in your email, if you just use the e-notify option, you will immediately get an email notifying you that a change was made.
Mayor, just a, an administrative question. In section 12A, under violations, you got violations different between A and B. Is it supposed to be the same or? It says unsafe and unfit. The other one says building and construction code. Was it just an administrative area?
No, no, no. A, A is if it's not contested and it's a citation. B is if it's contested and you come to the board and have a hearing. The board can give a higher fine, look to the amount. You don't necessarily have to, but they have the right to if they think the higher fine is justified.
No, what I'm saying is it's up under the violation column. In the top part, it says unsafe and unfit structural code. The bottom part of mine says building and construction code. Should it be the same?
Well, I think it would be good if it were the same.
That can be under the planning zone. I take care of that separately. In other words, if planning, they don't get a permit to put up a fence. We had one deal where they didn't get a permit. They put up a fence on the front of this property made out of pallets, wooden pallets. And it blocked the view from the, from the driveway blowing, trying to pull out on the street. Well, that came with two complaints. It was a nuisance and a safety hazard. Plus the building inspector didn't get a $25 permit to put that fence up. And it wasn't notified, I mean, it wasn't surveyed where they knew where to put it. And they just say that's finally coming down. But I think that may reference something like that.
Well, I, I've made, Joe's question brings up a good point. And I think we need to amend this to make the second group say the same as the first. Either, either make both of them say building and construction code or both of them say unsafe and unfit structure code. I, I see your point, Joe, and it's a good point. We took it straight out of the plan that came from KLC. But I think you're right, it needs to be the same.
I will then, I'll take my, my motion in for section 12 under subsection B. Or have building and construction code, remove that. So it reads as unsafe and unfit structural code.
I, I think that's good.
It'd be a violation on both parties. You don't have to worry about it.
That, that's, that's part of the motion now, Joe, it's on.
Is that good, Joe?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
We have, we have a motion to accept this, uh.
Second amendment.
I meant second amendment as read. Do we have a second?
I made the first.
Turn your nail. You made the first. Do we have a second to this amendment? Second, I mean, Monica, Patrick. All those in favor of the second amendment, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Second amendment passes. Now we need to vote on the, the whole ordinance with the first and second amendment inserted, correct?
And then just.
I have a motion to accept the ordinance as read with the first and second amendment inserted.
Motion by Vaneo.
And I have a second, I mean, a second motion for the, the ordinance as read with the amendments.
Okay.
Have a second by Witcher. All those in favor of adopting this ordinance with the amendments as read, inserted into it, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
One, one that's against it is it read, the other eight as read. Appreciate y'all's patience in doing this. It was a long drawn out process, but it's been worked on for several, it's been to this part. So thank y'all for having us through with it and keeping going. The next item of bid, uh, next item is some clarification. When, about mayor pro temp and council representative. We have been the last two terms, the last two years, instead of making an executive order, I've asked y'all to vote for who you want to be. We use the term mayor pro temp. And ours, in our type of government, which is council, mayor council, a mayor pro temp cannot be a councilman. It has to either be the city attorney or the city clerk. But one of, one of the, one of the council can be what's called a council representative, which they preside over the meetings. If the mayor's not available, they preside over the meetings. But that's called a council representative according to KLC. And in the past, that's all been done by executive order. But it's appropriate for you all to vote on who you want to be, run these meetings if the mayor's not here. And that's called a council representative. And the thing about that, if you're running, if you're one of the councilmen and you're running, presiding over a meeting, you still have your vote. So you don't lose your vote because you're the council representative. The only other thing that's, that's, that's different from being the mayor is that you can't vary from the agenda. If you suspend the rules and vote something in that wasn't on the agenda, the mayor has 10 days to appeal that or not to veto. And the reason that you can't be the mayor pro temp is because mayor pro temp is. that you can't be the mayor pro team is because mayor pro team is, is does the day-to-day duties, duties in case the mayor is basically incapacitated. And that, according to KLC, and it's been done in the past with the city attorney. And we have, there is a couple of, uh, ordinance, I mean, a couple of the executive orders that has the city clerk. What I will do is make the city attorney, and if he's incapacitated, make the city clerk to do the daily, daily duties that the legislation branch can't do. It's the executive only. But that being said, uh, I would entertain a motion for you all to elect who you want to be the council representative. And it's for a year at a time. So if, uh, instead of me making, I'll have to make an executive order as to your, as your, as to your wishes, because that has to be a record. But I would like for you all to nominate from you, from your, that body, and nominate who you'd like to be the council representative. And we will in turn put that person in and you'll be notified, uh, as a, by a, uh, by the executive order and a phone call. If, uh, if the mayor cannot be at a meeting, you'll be put in as a council representative on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and that Monday. Regardless of, if they're just gonna be out of town for Monday, you will be in that position for those four days. So if anybody has a question, I'd be glad to answer. And if you don't, I would entertain a motion for you, you all to elect your council representative for this year. And we will put them in, in the books as the council representative.
Will we have to suspend the rules to do this?
No.
Mayor, I'd like, I'd like Joe Trigg.
I.
Mayor, I got a question. You, you own a city council for twenty-plus years, I believe. And a lot of you guys have been on there. When is the last time that you know of or can remember where something to this effect has been implemented? I mean.
Well, the council representative has been replaced probably, well, I've got the one here, ten, uh, excuse me, eight, nine, ten years ago, there was five occasions to where, and they called it at that time, a contact person on the council. And it, and it, it didn't get the term of council representative until about fourteen years ago. But we didn't get it here till just now, really.
Right.
I know it happened when dad was mayor, that occasionally Jimmy Farrell had to do something for him.
He did. And I was, back then, I had a phone call. I did two or three times with Mayor Honeycutt. He did a phone call and said, I've gotta be in Frankfurt. Will you do the ribbon cutting, which is not an executive duty? So, I mean, back then, we didn't have an order. We had a phone call. And then during Mayor Pickett's, I had a couple of times. But we actually had, Pickett actually made, uh, looks like three, two or three different, uh, council representative, but it was called back then council person, council person contact. And he had it for an executive order. But KRS has stated those two terms have to be upheld and it has to be, uh, because we are a council, mayor council government. Now, if you're in Bowling Green and you're a mayor, mayor commissioner, you have a mayor pro team and they conduct meetings and they'll conduct the day-to-day business for that commission if, uh, if that mayor is, is out of, out of, uh, out of the office and can't be there to attend to it. But here it has to be, to be a mayor pro team. You have to be either a city attorney or a city clerk. And this is by KRS.
But that, those, but those two positions not are elected officials though? I mean, would that make a difference? I mean, you just appointed somebody?
City, the city account, the city attorney and the city clerk are not elected officials.
I know. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. But it, that's how KRS is. They're in the, in the executive branch of government. And they're the ones that have to do the daily business. They have, one of those two have to be in, sitting behind that desk. If I was to be hit by a train, they have to be in behind that desk. And if he was, if I got hit by a tornado and, and the city attorney got hit with a tornado, and the only one here out of the three up here was left, she would have to take care of the daily, daily business till somebody else could get appointed or by the governor or whoever, if I couldn't perform my duties.
But what we're talking about is just who would preside over the meetings of the legislative body?
That's correct. That's called a, that's called a council representative. And that's who we want, want you all. I mean, I could make an executive order and say I want Joe Trigg and that would be fine. That's legal. But I'd rather you all vote for who you want to be that position.
All right. I have a question on, on that, Mayor Armstrong. I thought that this would be a decision that would come via an ordinance, or we would decide at each meeting who that person could be. I thought those were the only two options we had.
You can nominate somebody, vote for them. And anytime that I'm going to be gone in this for tape, I say myself, I would make an executive order. It'd be number one fifty-nine or whatever, that says whoever you vote for, that Joe Trigg is gonna, gonna be, uh, the council representative for March thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth. And put that in the book. You can vote on who you want. And then I'll in turn make that an executive order when they, when they have to preside over the meetings.
I move the nomination cease.
We have a nomination for Joe Trigg. Is that correct?
Yes.
That was the happy deal. We have a nominee, we have a motion that the, that the, uh, the nomination ceased by Wendell Honeycutt. All those in favor of Joe Trigg signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by the same sign.
That's my idea.
Joe Trigg, you're a now the council representative and will preside over the next meeting that the mayor cannot attend. Thank y'all. Appreciate it. And I'm glad we got it clarified because the last meeting, we didn't have all the information in here and we were still confused. But we do have it now. Uh, you have the pending appointment, uh, I think there's one or two I don't want to be sitting here, for the next meeting in your file. And announcements, this is not on the announcements, but I'd like to tell everybody.
Mayor, 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 one quick, I got a quick question and stuff. I mean, I meant to ask this last time. For the electric plant board, do we have a member coming off the board? Or do we have a member that don't want to be on the board? And with everything going on, can we not leave the board the same?
I remember coming off.
All right. Uh, all right. Is it, is what, his time is up and he doesn't want to be on the board? Or she doesn't want to be on the board anymore? Or we've made a decision to change that membership?
His time is up. That's all I, I don't know if he wants to stay on the board or not, but his time's up and that's reason he's being replaced.
All right. Now, because we don't know, with everything going on with that board and, uh.
We're not discussing that tonight. That's gonna be discussed in the next meeting.
All right.
Because it's not on the agenda to discuss it.
All right. If we could add there, if we, Mona, if we can get that added on there next time, so we can figure out.
Well, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, you're gonna be voting on the person that's set up. And any information you want to ask, you can ask then. That should be on the next agenda to vote on the.
The municipal order.
The municipal order will be on there to accept him or not.
Well, he's, he's not asking that though. He's just asking why the person not being asked to be back on the board or?
I don't want to ask him.
Oh, okay. That's what he's asking. I mean.
I didn't understand the question. I don't want, I have had all the chaos down there almost. I don't want to have ten phone calls a week because people argue. I want people to get along and do whatever they're gonna do and go on. So, don't mean to be rude, but sitting in that seat down there and fielded all the calls in a week's time, you would understand. Both pro and con. So. But anyway, back to the announcements. We have under single, under, single bids, bids on the property out of County Barn and Union Road. And we got a high spend of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And we, last Monday, the eighteenth, we, uh, I went into the attorney's office and we closed that. And our net check on that was one thirty-six nine. We paid for a deed. That's the only thing we had to pay for out of that sale. So that one is gone. We don't have to maintain it. We don't have any liability on it anymore and it's gone. And we have a few others we're trying to put in the same situation so we can convert it to money and help, help furnish the budget for this upcoming year. Uh, our next council meeting is Monday, February the eighth, twenty twenty-one, seven PM via Zoom. The meeting can be viewed live on EPB, channel six. Is there any other announcements need to be made? If not, thank all of y'all for coming. And a special thanks to the city clerk and the, and the city attorney for his, all of his participation and getting out in the weather to get up here to so we can have this meeting. So thank all y'all for participating and setting through this long ordinance. If there's no other announcement, I'll take a motion to be adjourned.
Mayor, I hate to do this, but can I ask one last? Uh, I'm sure all of us as council members have been receiving, uh, comments, phone calls on the vaccine dissemination process and plan for the city of Glasgow. Uh, would you care to give us just your, and I, I saw the judge exec was on there, any of your two opinion on where we at? And if, if we're in the same place as the rest of the country, what's the new plan?
December the seventeenth, we were notified from the state wanting to know all the city officials, all the city workers, the number of people who wanted to get the vaccination. We sent that in. We took a head count that day. And of course, that didn't take in the police, the fire and EMS. They have already received theirs. Matter of fact, the police got their second dose yesterday, I think it was. But we have called the same people in Frankfurt no less than eight or nine times. And they keep saying, it's set up, you're gonna be getting it right now. The people seventy and over and supposedly added to that are the school officials are supposed to be in the next ten days are supposed to be getting a drug vaccination. But as far as the city officials and the city workers, uh, like I said, that started December the seventeenth. And I have not got anybody to tell me anything except it's coming. So.
All right. So does the, does the Barron County Health Department make the call? Or is it, do you and the judge exec work together to take care of the needs of our community?
And that comes in here, Walgreens has, has partnered and they've been giving out probably more vaccines. I heard yesterday that after these first responders had got their second, that you could call the, the health department. And if they had any dosage left over, you could get on the list and possibly get your vaccination through them. They have not called me to tell me that, but a person told me that they got on the list and was expecting this week to get a vaccination because they had some leftovers. That's just what was told to me by somebody else, not an official. So I don't know, the judge is still on there. He might want to verify, uh, he's in contact with Tracy every day. The, uh, judge, are you still on there?
He's gone.
I think he's gone. He probably suckered time. And sorry, Joe, I wish that I find out anything definite that it's this many doses coming and the citizens can get in line. Uh, I have made arrangements to offer the gym of the direct department for the Walgreens. Supposedly seventy and over, they're gonna, gotta use that because you've got a front and a back entrance. And they supposedly are starting either last of this week or next week. I'll sign up. She just dispersed the notes. I've talked to Ms. Quicken. She's the one that's with the Walgreens in, in this region. And she has, has made arrangements to use the gym up there. So I do know that much. But.
Radio station today said that people seventy and over could call the health department and be added to the list, but they did not have the doses yet to start distributing to the, that population group. Uh, I know they're doing that already in Bowling Green. They're already giving it out to that age group. So, or through the medical center.
If I did anything more definite, supposedly the, the Walgreens have been putting out, here in Muffinsville, have been putting out hundreds and hundreds. And I think they did the, the extended, uh, living and the nursing homes. But I don't know any more than that right there. And I don't show you think I'm eighty, but I'm not seventy quite yet. So I don't have any other label on you, young.
Right.
Any other announcements or questions? And thank y'all again. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A motion by Councilman Witcher and the second by Councilman Capack. Thank y'all. You're adjourned.